Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is approval of our agenda for the day.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. You're kind of a citizen, Kathy. Are you interested in? No, you're gonna wait.
Yep.
Approval, or approved payment of bills and vouchers for the day.
So, second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Now, you can be heard. Department update, public health, Kathy McCain. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for putting me first, because I know the ones after me are kind of, they're quite the talkers, so I'll find them quick.
I think they just need to learn what not to do.
It's only good to be first if you're asking for money, you know.
Oh, shoot, I should have brought my request then. I apologize for not bringing that. No request today, just a department update. So, and I have a PowerPoint, so we'll just, and I did hand out, if you wanted to follow along with your own sheet, I did hand those out as well, so. So, this is about public health. In case any of you were wondering what department I'm from, Prevent, Promote, Protect, that's our logo. Here is our staffing. We do have forty-two just in the public health department, which includes public health nurses. The requirement for public health nurses is they have to be a registered nurse, and they also have to have a public health certification. So, there is an additional requirement for registered nurses. We have support staff, program managers, and also all of our WIC, Women, Infant, Children program. And then in our detox, we have twenty-seven, most of those are roster. We're still having challenges recruiting staff for detox, but we have RNs, LPNs, technicians, and then chemical dependency assessors. So, we're working hard on trying to recruit, but tough to get the LPNs and RNs for our detox program. So, that's the total number of staff we have. Public health, it's to protect and promote the public health and safety, and then the local government has the flexibility to identify and address needs locally. And Minnesota Medical Association did state that without a strong public health system, medical systems cannot succeed at controlling healthcare costs or improving health. Obviously, we're in the prevention end. The medical facilities are in the intervention and individual healthcare. So, public health is definitely necessary, as even noted by the medical association. There's just a few of our partners, schools, law enforcement, social services, municipalities, nonprofits, and private healthcare, et cetera. We work with obviously many partners in our communities. There's our areas of responsibility. These are our required areas. We have to ensure a public health infrastructure, so we have to ensure that we have the staff that can provide all of the responsibilities that are required. We promote healthy communities and healthy behaviors. Work on the spread of infectious disease, often times where, you know, we're notified of the communicable diseases across our region. Environmental health hazards, we work on that. We have our environmental health individuals that do the food, pool, and lodging, and we also respond to other health hazards out there. Disasters in communities and recovery, our preparedness coordinator is working on those, and we respond to public health emergencies as well as other county emergencies, and assure the quality and accessibility of health services. And those are basically our mandated general broad areas of responsibility. Some of our programs, our WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, and there will be a slide that tells a little bit more about that. We provide immunizations in our clinic. We do the restaurant inspections, pools, and lodging with, we do clay and Wilken counties right now. And we provide healthcare services at just the juvenile detention. We used to provide the jail nursing, but they, we went with, they went with a company now. So, we just have the juvenile detention nurse, and she is full-time over there. We work on youth tobacco and chemical use prevention programs. Our public health nuisances, that's a broad area, covers all kinds of different things that create public health nuisance, or public health emergencies, as we talked about. And then we have our case managers that provide long-term care consultation, personal care assistant, case management, et cetera. We have a program, and we work with social services in that area. So, there's some examples. We investigate and control communicable disease. We've worked on the measles. Those are two of the recent ones. We've had Ebola meetings, and we now have received some funding from the state to work on planning for Ebola. So, we will be working on, they gave us a little bit of money to work on some plans and work with our counterparts with Ebola planning. Assess the health needs of the communities. We are required to do a community health assessment every four years and create a community health improvement plan. And we are on our second round of our community health assessment. We previously did one, and we work with Sanford and Essentia on the Fargo side, as well as the Public Health Agency in Fargo. So, we are required to do that, and then we'll also be working in the west central region, so with Becker, Otter Tail, and Wilken counties. So, we create a plan, and then we look at the needs and then develop a community health improvement plan. And then our policies to foster healthy communities. Obviously, you've heard about our statewide health improvement program that works on quite a wide variety of areas, and developing wellness policies, looking at systems and environmental health factors. And then we provide home visits to high-risk pregnant women and families. We have the two evidence-based programs that the state requires. We just started the Healthy Families America program, and we have had the Nurse Family Partnership. We were the first one in Minnesota to have the Nurse Family Partnership program, and now it's quite widespread across the state. And those are two programs that the state recognizes, and they will allocate funding to those programs. So, here's some of our family home visiting statistics. We still have just a general maternal-child health program if there's families out there that don't meet the requirements for the other two. So, we're seeing a fair number of clients in that program. That was a program that has been in place for years as well, and it started before, you know, at the beginning of our home visiting programs. The Healthy Families Americas, you can see low numbers because we just started implementing the program. And then the Nurse Family Partnership, there's the number of clients as well, one hundred and fifty-three, and then the number of visits. So, there's a lot of clients out there that we still don't see. Some of, you know, we depend on referrals. We receive referrals from WIC. We will receive referrals from the medical facilities, and even self-referrals, or someone that knows of a friend that knows of our program. But we certainly know there's plenty of other women and children out there that could benefit from our program that we don't see. There's our immunization program. We do the number of children immunizations, just general immunizations for children, and then we also do adult immunizations as well. And then our flu immunizations, that we continue to do. Sixty-four this last year for children and seven hundred and fifty-four for adults. So, even though there's plenty of places to receive a flu vaccine, we're still seeing quite a number that come to our clinic.
What's the difference between clients, like children zero to eighteen? You got two hundred and seventy-seven clients, but seven hundred and forty-six immunization. What's the difference?
Well, because children sometimes receive two, three, four vaccines.
At a time.
So, yeah, so there's a lot more immunizations that per child.
Okay.
So, that's the difference.
Kathy, can you tell me what percentage? I see you have two seventy-seven from zero to eighteen, but are the majority of them up to twelve, or does it just vary?
Yeah, varies. We see, we receive, we don't really technically see the real young, if someone needs to go to the, like the zero to six months.
The well babies?
But, yeah, but they do, they do come to our facility for many of the other vaccines after that. And then our WIC program, and it's a supplemental food program for women, infants, and children. And there is our statistics from 2014. So, that's the fourteen thirty-four is our participation per month. And then you see the number of women and infants and children up to five, because they can, they have to qualify for the program, and they can be in the, we can have children in the program up to five years of age. They have to be pregnant, breastfeeding, or recently had a baby. And they have to have a medical need, and then meet the income guidelines to be in our WIC program. And our WIC dieticians, we have three dieticians that work in that program, and they do the nutritional assessments, the counseling about food nutrition. We really promote breastfeeding, obviously the best, that's the best for the baby. And there's the package, so they get vouchers, and it varies. Those are average amounts. And that's the vouchers they receive to get the WIC food packages. And we provide them a guide, so they know what foods qualify in the program. So, everybody gets a guide, so they understand what they can get and what they can't. And you can see, you know, over a million dollars was spent on the WIC food program. So, those are the vouchers that they go to the facilities here. Pardon me?
Is that a monthly?
That million dollars was over.
No, no, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty dollars, sixty dollars?
Yep. To buy, yes, to buy the food that qualifies.
I think the education piece is one of the most important pieces that you add in, the counseling on good food choices. And I've also noticed an expansion in the places that Carrie or will accept WIC coupons.
Mm-hmm.
And just shopping, you can see what are approved items, and they're healthy, good, quality foods.
And many of them are labeled.
Correct.
So, they get their food guide, but they can also see, and they, and they will change the guide. So, they may add, you know, different cereals and different things each year to the, the WIC program does add to the food guide, so.
Right.
Our prevention area, that's our health promotion prevention. So, we work obviously on the ship requirements with the healthy eating, active living, and tobacco prevention. We have alcohol and other drugs program for that. Oral health, so that's the, with the kids, the dental program. Social determinants of health, so we have a health equity grant that we will be working on. Mental health is involved in that. Access to healthcare, and our child and teen checkup outreach. And that is to ensure that children and teens get regular well checks. And we can provide those at the juvenile detention. The nurse over there provides a child and teen checkup. It's a comprehensive screening by a nurse, so we can identify if there's issues and whether they need to be referred to a medical provider or some other provider. And we also provide child and teen checkups in our clinic as well.
Who can follow up on these things? Anybody?
The, well, a lot of these.
I want to go to visiting, healthy eating.
Yeah, that's with our ship program. So, we're working with schools and other organizations. So, that's broadly working in the community with all of our partners across the four, our four county region. The child and teen checkup, there is qualifications for that. It's usually those that are on the ME that are receiving those checkups. The outreach is just, we have a program where we have funding to do outreach. So, we work with medical providers across our county to ensure that they're up to date on doing these checkups with children and ensuring that the children get in and do their wellness exams. And again, a lot of our funding that we have through our health promotion area, SHIP, you've heard of quite a bit, the health equity, Growing Up Healthy Kids and Communities Grant. These are, these are all grants that we've received. The Clearway Minnesota is the tobacco-free grant that we have. Working with the food pantries, the food shelves, the food hub. I know John Everett was on many of those committees. Our open streets, walkable, healthy streets. Region Three Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Prevention Coordinator, we have a grant through the Department of Human Services, and our person covers thirteen counties. And they work with the communities on working on alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention strategies. And then I described our child and teen checkup outreach. So, with all of our health promotion, we bring in over a million dollars just in grant funding for that area. So, it's quite a large project. All of these cover, again, the four counties, so it's Clay, Wilken, Otter Tail, and Becker. So, our staff work across the four county region in all of these areas. Our detox, we're licensed and regulated by the Department of Human Services, Department of Health. Currently, we have our two agreements now. I think I mentioned the second agreement we were working on when I was here last. We have an agreement with Southeast, and now we have a signed contract with the VA. And we have met with them last week. We met with a number of their staff. And we have received about six clients already in the last week. So, they are concerned a bit about the low number of beds because they feel they have so many clients that we can serve. So, they're certainly interested in an expansion of our detox facility, and that may play out sooner than later. We have to have staff to provide the sixteen beds.
When you say, Lino, where's our beds at, are they?
We have, the facility has sixteen beds. We just can't use, we can only use ten. We're only licensed for tens, so the six beds have to stay.
That's in the Family Service Center, though?
Right, correct, yes. It's in the Family Service Center building, yeah. It's a locked facility on the second floor. So, but we have, we have the capacity to have sixteen, and in the past, we have had sixteen beds. But, you know, it was, we weren't having the number of referrals, and it was high cost to provide two staff per shift, and so we went down to ten. We've had ten for a number of years. But I believe with the second contract in place now, there probably will be a need to move up to sixteen bed and hope to have the staff to, have to have the staff to provide the service.
So, if you add the staff member, clearly there's a cost to it, but then you up your beds.
Correct, yes.
And you don't necessarily get any more revenue.
Well, we, you know, we're getting quite a bit of revenue, and I'll show, I mean, you can see the statistics, fifty-four percent. These are clients where they come from. We have a large number of homeless population as well, so the thirty percent.
You don't collect a lot from that.
We don't, no. That's, that's a small percentage.
Seems to me we talked about a lot of write-offs.
Yes.
And I see there's thirty-five percent are North Dakota clients. Are we, have we talked about not turning away Minnesota clients, or in order to?
We haven't had a need to do that because we haven't. There's, there's been a number of times, I think I, I think I mentioned about ten times over the last year that we were at capacity and didn't have room for a client. But the majority of time, we're able to take all the clients. That may change again with our new VA contract. Total admissions is listed there, so higher than what we had in 2013.
Mr. Chair, Kathy, maybe you should tell them what you charge those out-of-county and out-of-state clients. Did you mention that, the fee?
No, we have a daily rate that we charge, and I think it's three twenty. I'll have to write that down, but I think it's three twenty a day, so that's the charge. And we're receiving all the revenue from the North Dakota clients that are referred to us.
And that has reduced.
You know, there's some that we don't receive funding from. So, and then there's a few.
But North Dakota clients, is it, does the Cass County help out then in that regard? If it's a North Dakota, if a Cass County resident, and the resident can't afford it, does the county help pay?
It's all through the Department of Human Services. So, they, that's where we're receiving our funding, which flows through Southeast. So, our funding is coming with our contract through Southeast.
We get paid for every North Dakota client.
We get paid for every North Dakota client that comes through Southeast, and that's the ones we're seeing.
That's why we went through the special legislation with North Dakota and Minnesota.
Right, the interstate agreement.
So, we could have North Dakota clients here.
Right, and with the VA, they will screen their clients in their emergency room, and then they will send them over. We'll get paid for all of those as well. So, our contract covers the cost of all of those clients. So, when you look at the county tax dollars, it's fifty-three percent, but last year it was seventy. So, we really reduce the cost even with just, you know, North Dakota DHS. And we suspect that would be reduced more.
What's the average stay of a person then?
We can keep them up to seventy-two hours minus weekends and holidays. The average stay, a lot of our clients stay forty-eight hours. They have to be cleared by the nurse, and they have to be stable, medically stable, and they have to be completely detoxified, as much as completely detoxified. It's a loose term, but as much as they're able. So, they, we don't send them out if they have, if they're intoxicated. So, but they can stay up to seventy-two hours if there is a need to sign them in for longer. We have the ability to do that, but our average is, I'd say, forty-eight hours. And there is a breakdown of our revenue sources. So, you can see, we, you know, we mentioned all of the state and federal grants that we receive, quite a bit percentage. And then we have a large percentage of insurance in MA and Medicare, and then our contracts. So, you know, we have three large pots. Of course, we get county tax dollars as well, but the more grants we receive, the less we hope to rely on the county tax dollars. So, we generate a lot of revenue in our department.
Yes, you do.
So.
And the county tax, that's been fairly stable.
Yep. So, I know that was quick and brief. Any questions?
I saw somewhere in here, you were talking about long-term care contracts.
Oh, long-term care consultations.
Well, yeah, but I turned that into long-term care contracts. The reason that I did that is your agency is also an educational agency. And to me, having young residents who can afford, while they can afford to have long-term care insurance, should do so. Because the alternative to that can lead to dependency on government agencies to handle that for them. And it seems to me, I'm a proponent of it. I've bought it. I have it. And I just, I would like to see some sort of a educational process out there, for young professionals especially, that, because the younger you buy it, the cheaper it is. And not only that, but you can also buy, I have a policy that I bought that it's fully paid for in ten years. It's got an annual premium. It's fully paid for in ten years, and it will cover me for five years in a facility with escalating dollar amounts annually for benefit. If I had nothing, and something happened to me and I had nothing.
Yeah.
Somebody else has still got to cover that, right?
That's correct.
So, so it seems to me that as we're trying to educate people on a lot of things of what not to do, this might be one where there should be consideration or some discussion about education on things that we can do to help make it better for them.
And we haven't really gotten into the insurance end of things, but.
And I, and I don't, I don't know that we should be promoting any one insurance.
No.
But long-term care insurance is long-term care insurance. And if you were to do a poll of everybody who's had it and has had to use it, they'll tell you it was hundred percent successful. And you know what else? Everyone who's got it and had to use it didn't have to have public funds help them.
That's correct.
So, it, to me, it's a way to, to help assure that the demands on the public funds to take care of, and you don't even have to be elderly. If you run into some sort of a situation that qualifies you for long-term care insurance, you could be twenty-four years old.
Right.
But now you've got a system in place that pays for it, and it helps freeze up government money to work in those areas. But I just, I just think that educational fees should be important. And it should be important for us to be doing it, not only, not only the insurance agents to do it.
No, that's a very good point. Certainly something we can, we, you know.
You can kick it around your board.
Yeah. That's great.
The licensing inspection of restaurants, is that what we see in the paper again? I mean, you see in the form every once in a while, restaurants being inspected, stuff like that. So, we're the ones that are doing those stuff.
Right, the two individuals, Bruce and Kent, are providing all the restaurant, lodging, and pool inspections.
Okay.
And we license those facilities, and then that revenue supports the requirements to provide that service. It can be a state-provided service or a delegated agreement to the counties. And we've had that delegated agreement to our county for years.
You say that revenue, where do we get that?
The licensing revenue supports the inspections that they have to provide.
Oh, okay.
And then the education they also provide to business owners on, you know, safe food handling, et cetera, proper equipment, those kinds of things. Plus, we have to investigate if there's any foodborne illness, that, if there's any outbreaks that are from a restaurant, either workers or foodborne-driven outbreaks. We have to inspect those as well. So, and we will probably be, we're doing Wilken County as well. We provide those licensing for those facilities and the inspection of the Wilken County facilities. So, and there's a potential that we'll be expanding that. Otter Tail will also be providing that delegated agreement. Right now, the state provides all of the services for Otter Tail, but they're very interested in doing it locally. So, they may come on board, we're working in that process right now with, they may come on board with us to provide services in Otter Tail.
Is that part of the partnership for health?
Correct, yep. Any other questions?
So, Otter Tail will be looking for some cooperation from us then?
Yes.
Just wondering. Okay.
In public health, we're pretty cooperative.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Celebrate too, I guess. Water, no.
Dave, come on up, Nathan.
Good morning, Nate.
Department update for the County Engineers' Office. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Kind of sprung this one on Nathan a little bit. I don't think he knew I was gonna ask him to come with me, but I thought our next bid item, or our next agenda item anyway, is pretty relevant to the work that he's been working on, so I thought it'd be good. Well, my first item is our highway department update. Tried to put down all the things that we've been working on, those kind of frontburnered items and things that will be happening in 2015. The highway committee, I feel, is a very valuable tool for the highway department as almost all these items either have been or will be run through our highway committee. And it's a really good buffer, I guess, to help me streamline my work before I bring things before the board. The first item, number one, is just explaining a little bit. Our construction program isn't real large this year in number of projects, but it is pretty sizable in dollars that we'll be dealing with this year. We've got our County Highway Eighteen paving and County Highway Fifty-two. We did realize recently that the price of cement has risen drastically, so we put together an alternative bid, so it could be either asphalt paving or concrete paving. It did add three weeks to our design as well as the bid opening. So, I guess a little bit of a negative there, but at least we'll be able to capture all the bidders. And, you know, if there's a low efficiencies and some dollars saved, we're hoping to do that. Another project, or item number two, I think most of the commissioners are aware that we are kind of working with the city of Glendon on a TAP grant. That's the new transportation enhancement. Now, it's called Transportation Alternatives Program. And that's a grant that we're looking at sharing, partnering with the city on sidewalks in conjunction with our reconstruction of County Road One Seventeen. on sidewalks in conjunction with our reconstruction of County Road one-seventeen or Park Avenue in the City of Glendon. They've been very good to work with, and they're very excited for some work right down the city. I know Mindot's done a couple, you know, a project or two recently in the last ten years, with the most recent one coming up here in about two years or so. But even so, most of the work, it's just kind of, it's refresher-type work, where this is gonna be a total recon, this is gonna be real nice. When we get done, you'll actually know something happened there. It's gonna be, the streets will be wider, there'll be sidewalks. We're not gonna have open ditches draining the water, we're gonna have storm sewer. It's gonna look real nice when we're done, so I'm actually real excited about that myself. That'll be a, it's a big improvement. The road itself isn't in very good shape, plus all the kids that walk into school, they're all walking right on the street there, and the school buses, and there's an elevator, and there's lots of agriculture stuff going on there, and just not a safe environment. You see mothers pushing their, you know, little, their strollers and things with these kids, and it's just scary that nothing's ever happened. I think people are used to it and they look for it, but you just never know when something could happen, so... So that's our project number two, or task item number two. Number three, I don't know if you guys all, I think everybody knows it. Recently started a Minnesota chapter of towards zero death. The Morehead Police Department was pretty actively in pushing this. We received a grant, and we've got a grant person helping us from Fergus Falls. Her name is Jane Patrick, and she's very good. We're doing fatal review things, as well as there's all kinds of other type of educational things that they're gonna be working at the schools on, like mock crash things, and they're giving out T-shirts and just awareness on wearing seat belts and, you know, driving without texting and things like that. So it's a fun little thing to work with. Years ago, we were involved in the Public Cast, Public Health Safe Coalition, and for some reason, the Minnesota side just kind of got left out of that. So we started our own and kind of moving forward with that. So we will bring our, any expertise we can in the engineering side of this, as well as, you know, taking a look at the fadals if there's any issues that we can do. Mindot also has grants, federal grants for this sort of thing, and we've been actively pursuing those with rumble strips and adding signage and lighting intersections and things like that, so... Our next item I want to talk a little bit about, and I'm sure everyone's aware of this, is we're also on the Correctional Facility Replacement Committee, I guess. And most recently, we've been working with soil borings. How we took some soil borings across from the jail over there and just trying to contribute what we can with regard to some preliminary design here. We're gonna be getting a preliminary report within the next week or two, and then once we know a little more about the size and the height of the structures that we're looking at, we will then get a final report, so can just keep plugging away on that. And I think a few of us will be touring Douglas County next week, so kind of looking forward to that, too. That should be exciting.
Yeah, question, that one, the, I brought it up at that meeting, the soil borings that were done on the northwest side where potentially a new law enforcement center could go?
Yep.
We had talked about, and Brian, you were on vacation at the time.
Yep.
But I raised a question about if we were to look at a main floor area that would be parking, and then a two-story above that for, which would be the law enforcement center's office spaces and whatever else they
Yep.
need. The soil borings that they've done, would that be sufficient to know about handling that kind of weight?
I think we're probably gonna have to do additional borings in that area, though, but we will get that information.
I mean, it's just a topic that's been discussed. It's not a definite plan, but it's a topic that's been discussed. But if we're gonna be talking about it, we need to make sure that the land can hold it.
Sure. Task number five, I think everyone's aware that our department's been working with the landfill quite closely on several different projects. Last year, we just about completed the scale project. I think it's with maybe a little bit of software development and some training. We'll have that pretty much completed. We also do daily cover survey when they need it. We recently were asked to do a little work with surveying some points for some monitoring wells that they're doing some bid letting on some things, and rather than, you know, doing more of the surveying work in-house rather than subbing it out, so we're gonna save a little money there. And then I think there's some talk about an organic compost site, so there's some county-owned lands that we're gonna talk about, too, in the near future, so...
Dave, do you bill solid waste for your time?
Yes, we do. We don't, Nathan and I don't always bill a lot of our time, but I know like our technicians, when they're out surveying, they definitely do. But, yeah, we do bill a little bit. Try not to be too hard on them. Item number six, we're also working with our Highway Committee real closely, and Nathan and I have been working on trying to look for a possibility of a new motor grader shop for the City of Holly. We've been working with the Holly Emergency Response Team Committee. There's a couple members there that actively sought us out. It's something that we've talked about, you know, off the cuff a little bit for about fifteen years or so. And once they came to us with the request for our property, we just kicked it into gear a little bit. We've got several different sites. Most recently, the City of Holly has requested industrial type of a lot that is by the Cree Tech's plant there. So we're kind of working with them a little bit to investigate the cost and what that might be, if that's a viable option, and
For us?
Yeah, correct. We'll be talking more at the Highway Committee about that, too. It just kind of came up last week, so I know they reached out to Frank a little bit, and I talked to Lisa, the city clerk there, a little bit, and got some good information, so... I think it kind of boils down to Cree Tech's, they own that whole piece, and kind of heard they might want to sell the whole thing, where we would only need a small portion, I think the whole thing being
Forty acres, I think.
Is it forty? Yeah. It's a pretty big chunk, so if we could talk them out of five acres, it might work out real well, so...
Five is your ideal size?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, which would give us a little extra room for stockpiling.
What was Barnesville's acreage? That was a little more than five.
I think it probably is. It's kind of irregular shaped, but...
Yeah, that's not five acres.
No, it's smaller, okay. Yeah, it's kind of a pie.
There's so much right away there along fifty-two, maybe it kind of just appears a little bit bigger.
Yeah, okay.
As normally, we will be completing our five-year construction program. The dollars are so large this year that we kind of wanted to wait for our bid openings before we brought that in. We started working on a draft schedule, and we'll be bringing that to the Highway Committee probably our next meeting, so I know we're maybe a little behind on that. We like to have that in February or March, but we kind of wanted to see where our bids were gonna come in, and our item number two today will probably further push that back a little bit.
Dave, if I can ask, the bonding projects that we did for the last, in this last five-year plan, where are we in that? Are we at year three?
Correct, yeah.
And so we have major construction this year.
Yep.
And it's lower next year?
Correct, next four years, I think.
Next three or four years.
Mm-hmm.
And that's to pay them for all of the...
Yep. We've got municipal state aid construction, which we used, you know, hopefully to use a little bit of that for that Glendon project, as well as bridges are a little separate, too, so township is a whole nother pot of money. So we'll be doing other projects other than our state aid construction projects.
Then we're gonna need to start the process over again.
That's what we were hoping to do. If the rates stay low, you bet, we're gonna accelerate another five years in a short period of time. Task number eight, I guess, is our final phase of 2015 equipment purchase. We'll be talking about that today a little bit at our Highway Tracking Committee, and hopefully in the next meeting or two. We've got a couple mowing tractors, it's not a real big purchase, but they're, one's in oh-five and one's in oh-seven, so it's time to replace those as well. So we've got some pretty good numbers on those, and we'll be bringing that to the Board within a week or two. On the back page, number nine, we have a committee working, it's the Recorder and the GIS Director, myself, have been working with the survey community, putting together an upcoming training session, and also an RFP for legal land surveying. So the county always had a, what they kind of called a county land surveyor, was never a county employee, but it was a consultant that basically did remonumentation of corners. We would locate and plat those and try to fill our grid in, on every section corner, every quarter corner. More recently, I guess, we discontinued that relationship just based on it was kind of confusing for the public out there, and it maybe presented a little bit of an unfair advantage to them over other surveying firms being that they were listed as the county surveyor in our directories and things. So we have got a good committee, we've done a lot of work on it. We will be, in the near future, have an RFP for legal land survey services, which will actually get us further along than we had before. We never really had a consultant to actually look over plats and give legal advice on the GIS and certain things like that, as well as any other work that the Highway Department does. So we will have a kind of an hourly rate schedule set up for that, as well as a certain amount of corners every year that they will have to bid to us, too. So that's kind of how that's gonna work out, and so we're not gonna let that program slide. Kind of looking forward to that, and that'll be coming up probably in the next month or so. And the last thing, I guess I noted is, I've been working with the Recorder's Office, Auditor's Office, and Sheriff's Office with regard to replacement of our current credit card vendor. The credit card vendor that was set up, I don't know, did you say about four or five years ago?
About four.
About four years ago. It's a company called County Gateway. There's been some change in some of the management there. The recording and reporting for our accounting hasn't been quite what we hoped it is. We don't quite get what we want. It's pretty laborious to make things match and to rectify, I guess, at the end of the month, so it takes a lot of work. They have to export things and do all kinds of work by hand, so to speak, with spreadsheets to get these things to rectify. It should just be a report that this software could send out to us, as well as, I know the Recorder's Office is real bothered by, we only get payments like once a month, rather than as the payments come through electronically. So she would like to see them more timely. We started working with one vendor, and it just didn't seem like they matched up with our permit, our online permitting software company. So we found another company that is working with Polk County, and their integration work between RT Vision's permit software and the credit card company is... I thought it should have been complete by now, but we were kind of waiting for that work to get done, and then we were gonna come right behind them. The new credit card company that we're working with is VPS, or Variable Payment Systems. They will pay for all this integration work as we switch from one credit card to the next, which was looking at maybe up to seven to ten thousand dollars with the previous company that we kind of started with. If anybody remembers, a company by the name of Swerve Pay.
We went into a contract agreement earlier?
No, we did get approval from the Board to make that transition, but we never actually got moving because Swerve Pay and RT Vision just couldn't line up, and it just, the amount of dollars to make that reintegration was just tremendous. It was, I think it was like anywhere from eight to twelve thousand dollars, and I just didn't understand why it costs so much just to reintegrate, but it did. So when I heard that Polk County was doing the very same thing that we're doing, they're also taking property taxes through this variable payment system. Lori doesn't really want to go there yet, but my thinking is, you know, if they're doing it and we choose to someday, at least we know it's a viable option, so...
Correct.
I started getting involved in conversation with VPS, and it seemed like the right way to go, and we're about two-thirds of the way through our process, so I just wanted to share that.
Dave, I have a question. You had mentioned that the dollars, is it concrete or cement, will be more this year?
Yep.
And maybe you can't answer until after the bids come in. What's the dollar percentages that you're anticipating to be over on that? Not for the project, but just the product itself?
I think Nathan's got like maybe a square yard price, probably, for the cement.
We only have one day out that we can really, whether we use, that's a rural project comparable to what we're bidding. We were told out in Grant County, when they bid their project, their price per cubic yard for concrete that they had estimated was eighty dollars a cubic yard. And that's actually their engineer's estimate, and that was five dollars more than the statewide average from the previous year. So I feel comfortable that the number that they selected was appropriate. When the bids came out, their price was a hundred and twenty dollars per cubic yard.
Wow.
Took their project that they were estimating at three million dollars and pushed it up to four million dollars. All their other prices came in within reason, a couple percent, you know, here and there. But that price per cubic yard for the concrete material resulted in them rejecting all bids and starting over. There was a bid that was done in Becker County, but that was all on urban construction, and their prices came in closer to what they estimated, but their volume is considerably less than what we're looking at. They're looking at city blocks, and we're talking miles of paving. So it's really not fair to compare apples to apples with a city in-town project and what we're looking at. So I guess, knowing that it's only one data point, it's hard to extrapolate what we would expect, but the suppliers are all the same groups.
Right.
So that's the reason that we went to an alternate bid.
Is the asphalt measured the same way in cubicards?
No, well, we pay it by the ton.
It's by the ton?
By the ton.
Okay, so, but that ton can be converted to cubicards?
It can be, yes.
So going to Jenny's question, so the, what you thought was gonna be eighty dollars in this one bid turned out to be one-twenty. Did they compare then the, or could there be a comparison to asphalt? And how that would compare to the eighty versus the one-twenty?
And we will do that after we get our bids.
Yeah, that's part of why you're doing this.
That's why you're asking.
That's why, yeah, which is really smart, but...
What we're seeing, and I don't want to go into a whole lot of our lifecycle cost analysis because we haven't let bids yet.
Right.
But if the asphalt prices come in similar to what we saw in Yocan County, and the concrete prices came in similarly to what the five-year, not the five-year, to what the
State average.
The state average was from the previous year, the lifecycle costs will be very, very close, based on what the initial cost was, or, you know, previously, and will be going forward, so...
We'll just see how they come in.
If we see the statewide average, yeah, it'll be, it'll be close, but if we get a hundred and twenty dollars...
But it's not gonna be this significant difference like that.
That's what we're hoping. I think what we're seeing is we're seeing the prices actually pulling apart. You know, a couple years ago when we bid County Road eleven, they came together real close. The price of asphalt was fairly high, and concrete was nice and low. Now, if we see the price of concrete getting more expensive due to the cement prices being higher, and oil prices are quite a bit lower right now, it's gonna be a pretty, it's gonna be a pretty interesting analysis here in a couple weeks.
Thanks.
We're gonna see a fifty percent increase over our projections. We're not gonna be doing a lot of work.
And then that's what we started looking at, you know? I mean, there's one thing of going, you know, five or ten percent over what you're estimating, but you also have a bottom line, too. You only have so much dollars in your bank. So no matter how good of a buy it is, if it's more expensive than what you have, it's gonna be denied. Thanks, Dave. Item number two, just wanted to maybe get approval or let everybody know that in addition to this price, the price is getting higher. Nathan also got a call, maybe I'll let him just explain the calls that he got.
Okay.
Sure. After the letting dates were set by the Board, and the advertisements went out to the contractors, they started picking up our plan sets, and I started getting calls, just about immediately, from the paving contractors locally and regionally that would be anticipated to bid on these projects. And, you know, they started out mainly just asking questions about the plans and the bid package and what they needed to do, because we are doing online electronic bidding, and it'll be a different software package than what they probably used in the past. But their next question was, "Do you realize that your bid date is the same date as the North Dakota DOT's?" I said, "Well, no, I guess I thought theirs were gonna be earlier in the year." And they said, "Well, they were supposed to be, but they ended up postponing their bids." Not once, but twice, they postponed their bids and pushed their bids now to the same March twentieth that we had set as our letting date. I said, "No, I guess I didn't realize that." And they said, "Well, the projects that they have coming up for letting, they have three projects that their engineer's estimate are around thirty million dollars each." And they said, "Knowing that we've got an opportunity to bid on three thirty-million-dollar jobs, that's gonna put your project probably a little lower on our totem pole as far as picking order as to what we're gonna work on. And if they're all gonna be due on the same day, if we have four projects we're bidding on the same day, we're probably not gonna have the time necessary to really give you guys a good package or necessarily even have time to give you a package." And I thought, "Well, okay, again, one point is maybe an outlier. All right, I'm not, you know, one contractor says that, maybe the others won't." And then I got another phone call, and it was basically along the same lines. You know, "We're looking at your plans. We think we can fit this into the timeline that we got, because we gave them a big window for fifty-two as to when they can do the work." They said, "That helped us out a lot. It gives us more flexibility, but you're bidding it on the same day as North Dakota DOT, and we're looking at, and they're looking at the same issues." So these large contractors are coming, and these are the ones who are going to be prime contractors on our project. They're the ones who would be doing the asphalt or the concrete bidding. And they said, "We just, we're not seeing how we're gonna be able to put this together." And it's, and if you look at the four... And it's, and if you look at the four or five main contractors on either, for either pavement type, they generally are in the same boat. They bid both North Dakota and Minnesota work. You know, they all look at the same lettings and they're all coming with the same question. You know, "Guys, we want to bid your work, but we can't, we can't do both at the same time. We can't do all of these at the same time as what North Dakota has going on." And then we found out that the week later, same, the next Friday, the Minnesota DOT has the same issue going on with our 18 project, where they've got a large letting that is, again, kind of compounding projects that have been pushed into this one letting and their local regional projects that these same contractors will be bidding on. They said, you know, and granted, we've always looked to try and get our lettings ahead and try not to overlap with state lettings, mainly because we do them on Tuesdays and the state lettings are usually towards the end of the week. But this go-around, we relocated our letting dates because of the online bidding. We wanted to make sure that, you know, that the online bidding could be done, open the bids, compare the alternates, go to the tracking committee, you know, take a look at the alternates, show our analysis, and then come to the board with a recommendation. They're actually telling us, the contractors, that these two weeks that we've picked don't work for them at, really at all. And they said, honestly, they'd said, "We would be better off waiting until April 3rd for a letting to let the dust settle so that they know what's going on with these two large lettings, so they know what, so they can..."
So they know if they need our job or not.
Well, not well that, but then also so that they can dedicate the resources for the people who are their estimators to put good bids together. Because they said if they don't have time to really take a hard look at our plans, they're going to throw numbers that are either unrealistic or just not bid.
I know when Nathan first brought it to my attention initially, I remember having many meetings as well as, you know, I know the wish is ours to let projects as early as we can, and that's always been our goal. We lost three weeks with the redesign of the alternates, and now we're looking at losing another week, week and a half, and it's not normal, but-
Let me ask you this, and I don't want any names brought up, but you've had a couple of contracts calling, and I don't want their names mentioned here. But when you prepare these packets for pickup, or they already gotten them?
They've got them.
Yep.
How many, how many did we get? How many, how many picked them up? How many, how many bidders?
Oh, boy. That we would consider prime, capable of bidding as a prime contractor? Because we get, we get signed companies and other miscellaneous suppliers that pick them up.
Yeah.
Major, major contractors.
Like four or five, something like that?
Yeah, I was going to say five.
I know we've got a couple of them that are, one in particular you had mentioned that's not from our area, was kind of nice to see a, it's a concrete contractor, I believe, that we don't normally see, but.
But the, so you've had two of them say, "Well, we don't like the time that you're doing this because we want to spend our time bidding on other projects and we want to know if we got those projects." That's what I'm reading into this. "We want to know if we've got the other projects. If we got the other project, we might not bid on yours anyway."
That's a possibility.
Isn't it?
But I think the calls we got are people that bid, that regularly bid.
Regularly, yeah.
I think if it buys us time to get appropriate ballpark bids, that's our only option. I mean, it's what I'm hearing from you, I mean.
Well, we may, I think our worst fear is we wouldn't get the bids. We wouldn't get, you know, instead of getting six bids, we maybe get one or two. Whereas if we wait a couple of weeks, we will get all six bids. A little better to judge if we have a good bid or not, you know? It's hard to tell if you had a good bid if you don't have very many to-
Because if we only get one or two and they're double what we want it to be, it's going to have to go back to a bid process anyway.
What do you want to do, Dave?
Situation, I don't think we have any choice.
I guess that's the way I feel. Like I said, when he first brought it up initially, I'm like, "No, we're not going to do that." Just be, but then he got another call and he started thinking about it and-
Do you know why their bid schedules got pushed back twice?
No, I have no idea. I'm not sure.
Normally the DOT starts bidding in about November, December. They're real early, you know? But, you know, that's another thing that we're going to talk about at our Highway Committee a little bit. We just don't have the resources to start designing in July and June, July, because we're out in the field until freeze-up. So we don't actually start designing until mid-November. So to have our bids in February is pretty tough because you have a whole month of advertising. So if you want to open bids February 15th, you got to back off 30 days. Now you're January 15th and you've got probably two to three weeks of approvals through Menat and through Nathan and I. So now your plan's got to be on our desk by about the first of January or so. You know, it's kind of tough to-
So you guys are recommending we make the change to the-
I think it'd be a good, be a better risk to push it back.
By moving back that date, how many, how long are we moving it back, a week?
One.
Yeah, March 20th was our current bid letting for 52, so that would be back to April 3rd. We were one week later on 18, March 27th. So we would open both bids now on April 3rd. One thing that might help a little bit is, last year we did open most of our bids on around the first week in April. So we're not historically months later than we've done in the past. I don't know, there's other things. When I first started, I know we opened bids July 4th, a week of July 4th back in 2001. I couldn't believe it, but that was weird situations 15 years ago, but.
The issue on the delaying, and it's one week, but, and we talked about this concern, Frank, in our Highway Tracking Committee meeting about the significance and importance of Highway 18 getting done before the beet harvest. And, I mean, weeks matter.
You were talking two weeks here.
Yeah. And so, you know, so weeks matter and are we still going to be able to have those assurances that those roads are going to be open and ready for our beet trucks to travel?
Well, if last year the bid opening was at the same time, and there's beet harvest every year, I mean.
Yeah, but you've got to take a look at the scope of work too.
I, and they did 52, and there's beet trucks that travel on 52. I mean-
I think road restrictions are going on, like Thursday and Friday of this week. So there's going to be an eight-week period that there will be no equipment being hauled into any of our projects. I don't think it can ever go on any earlier than eight weeks, but, boy, this is going to be, it'll be eight weeks for sure they'll pull them off. Or is it, actually, I said that wrong, didn't I? It will never go longer than eight weeks. So it could be six, seven weeks that they lift them, if it stays warm.
Our start date for the 18 project is May 18th.
Okay.
So we still have plenty of time to get the bid open, board approval, get the contracts turned around, and have everything running and going before the 18th.
Are they starting east to west, or west to east, I mean?
We, the way we did the phasing, if you remember, we talked, Frank and Kevin, we talked about how we're going to phase the project. What they're actually going to be required to do is there's going to be an intermediate completion date on the stretch between 3 and 75 on 18. We're going to give them 45 calendar days to get that done. They'll also have that same 45 calendar days to get the work on the 11 bridge done. The rest of the project between 75 and the east end, a mile east of 11, they're going to have 75 calendar days to get done. We have bid in incentives, as you recall, to make sure that not only did we put together a good estimate for our contract time, what we think it's going to take, but part of the bidding package that they're going to be submitting to us is also includes bidding the number of working days that they think it's going to take. And when we analyze the bids, that contract time will be a multiplier in their bid. We won't actually pay them for those days that they bid, but it will allow us to judge and balance out the bids to make sure that we're getting not only a contractor who's going to give us a good price, but will also get it done in a timely manner. So they'll bid, let's say they come in and say, "All right, I can get your intermediate completion date done in 40 days and I can get your final completion date done in 70 days." Those are the new completion dates for the job, for the calendar days that they get to work on the job. Now, if they happen to come in and get it done faster than that, then we have put in the contract that they'll get paid an incentive of $1,500 a day. And like I explained to Frank, that is essentially for paying their overtime to make sure that they're getting compensated for that additional acceleration that they're doing in the project. So really, by delaying the bid one week, we will not be impacting the amount of time that they're going to have available to do the job. It'll just change how much time there is, that lag time between when the bid gets opened and when we actually start work. So by doing this, I don't think it's going to impact our completion date on the project.
Okay, one of the board's wishes.
So you want the, you want to set the date for the opening of the bids?
That's, I'd like to, we change both of them to April 3rd, then we will do another addendum, getting out to all the bidders.
Okay.
At 9:00 AM.
I'd move April 3rd at 9:00 AM for the bid opening for the two, for CASA 18 and CASA 52 projects.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same as aye, motion carries. Thanks. Rhonda, come on up. Social Service, Rhonda Porter, Department Update and Request the Phil's Social Work Position.
Okay. Um, I do have a departmental update this morning, and what I'm thinking, if okay with the board, is I have been trying to schedule unit opportunities to come before the board to give you a little bit more specific information about the different programs in each unit. So I won't go over in detail some of the information in this packet, just do some high-level overview, and then just know that we will be scheduling different department updates to give a little better information.
Great.
Okay. So first item in the packet is to give you a flavor of our overall organizational structure. So you'll see there, we have about 107 employees in Social Services, and you'll see that we are divided up into seven units. So we have two child protection units, which are on the far left-hand side. The first unit, actually, I'll be coming before the board next week to talk in more detail about the work that that unit does, but that's our child protection unit. They provide most of these services for callers to our agency where they are reporting concerns of maltreatment of children or child welfare issues, runaway, truancy, out-of-home placements, maltreatment reports, that kind of thing. The second unit there then is, when we get reports to our agency, if the level of intervention requires longer-term services, those cases will get transferred to the other unit for what we call ongoing case management kinds of services. So the next pages will go a little bit more in detail, but you can kind of see how we're laid out and where our staffing patterns are for each of our service areas. So the next page, again, just the child protection unit. Again, I already mentioned that I'm going to be coming to the board next week, but again, they deal with those initial reports of maltreatment. This unit also is very involved in our child protection team, and they also have a Child Abuse Prevention Council, so you'll be hearing about, from them in April. April's Child Abuse Prevention Month. So we have a committee that meets and works together to organize efforts at educating people in the public about child abuse prevention and kind of getting the word out about what to do in situations where there's concern. This unit also is involved with what's called the Children's Justice Initiative. That is an initiative, it's a statewide initiative, but it involves many stakeholders, the county attorney's office, law enforcement, public defenders, guardian ad litem's, that meet on a regular basis, that talk about the child protection system, how the child protection system interacts with families, what can we improve with our process, what are some things that we're worried about with our process, court flow, all those kinds of things. So that's a very involved team. The staff in this unit also are involved in the Divestic Violence Court Project, which also includes county attorney's office, judges, law enforcement. So it's, throughout the course of these units, you will hear about a lot of the committees or initiatives that they're on in the county. I think as a county, anecdotally, what I hear around the state is that we should be really proud about the work that we do across departments with our law enforcement, our judges, and our courts. It's not like that in a lot of counties, or many counties, and we're pretty fortunate to have really good relationships and really good teams that come together to try to make our systems work better together. So that's neat to see. This unit also is working in collaboration with Cass County on a couple of things. One, we have a Child Abuse Forensic Center, the Child Abuse Advocacy Center, that's actually located in Fargo, but our assessment workers will work across the river with that organization, again, all in an effort to streamline our child protection response system. And we also are working with a project on, with Cass County, on sexually exploited youth. So developing a consistent response process between our two counties. Our second unit is child protection and child welfare. So again, as I said before, this unit provides more long-term case management for families, but they also do all of our licensing. We license child daycare homes, so we have two licensers that go out and license all of the daycare homes in our county. They, we also have a child foster care licenser, so she will go out and do all the licensing of families who are interested in providing foster care for us, both family as well as corporate care. So you may have heard of organizations like CCRI, Divine House, MCRS, or some of the organizations that provide child foster care as well. So we also do the licensing for those homes. We also have an adult foster care licenser who does the licensing for adult family homes as well as corporate family homes. So we do all the work and send it to DHS and then they issue the license. So, again, a lot of stuff going on in that unit as well. In Adult Services, this unit provides adult mental health, adult chemical health. They provide long-term care consultations for elderly waiver, our elderly waiver program. Again, often you are hearing about the issues we have in mental health and adult mental health. This unit will provide, if we get a report, for example, if somebody is, if law enforcement responds to an individual in the community that might be harming themselves or others, and that individual is brought to the hospital and there's a concern about the safety of that individual, this unit will get that call to look at petitions for civil commitment or community-based services to help them be able to function within the community. So we do a lot of that with adult mental health. Similar for chemical health, obviously, we work with individuals that come to our agency on a voluntary basis. But a lot of the work that this unit does is services where family members might be concerned, service providers, health care providers are concerned, and they call our agency for intervention with the individual or family members. Okay, this unit also participates in a lot of initiatives. They participate in the Reintegration Advanced Planning Project, which is through our jail that you've heard about, the RAP program, again, working with folks that are incarcerated, trying to plan for their release back into the community. They work with a multidisciplinary team across the river with Cass County on elder abuse issues. They participate in the Drug Court Project as well as the Veterans Court Project here in our county. Disability services, this unit provides screenings and services for individuals who have disabilities and want to remain in the community, or those that end up needing to go into a nursing home as well. But overall, they manage all of the state's Medicaid waiver programs. And those waiver programs are all designed for, again, preventing folks from either entering a nursing home, entering intermediate care facility, maybe for somebody that has a developmental disability, entering other kinds of groups, group homes. So they work with these folks to try to arrange services so that they can remain in their home and support caregivers as they do that. Our Financial Assistance Unit, they administer all of the states, state and federal public assistance programs. So you'll see that they manage all of the cash grant programs, the SNAP program, or food support program, the childcare fund for low-income families. They process the medical assistance, the public medical assistance program. They manage all of the emergency assistance programs as well as our county-funded burials. This unit serves probably, at any given time, has about 6,000 cases that they're working with in and across these various programs. And I think it was last year, we came and did quite a detailed presentation about each of these service areas and the numbers that we serve, and we'll do that again sometime this year as well. But they are a big unit, and they manage all of these programs on behalf of the state and the federal government.
When you say about 6,000 cases, is that just in Clay County, we've got 6,000 cases?
Correct.
People in the financial system?
Correct, yeah. Many of those are on healthcare. The M.F.I.P. program is pretty relatively small, about 350 families. Many are serviced under the food support program, but many of them are healthcare, many of them are healthcare. All right, and then our Child Support Unit. Again, last year, we came and did a presentation, Sandy Thorne talked in detail about the services in her areas, but generally, it's broken up into three areas, child support, they do welfare fraud, and then they, and collections. So child support, again, they look to enforce child support payments, bottom line. They help to establish court orders for child support, will help enforce court orders, they'll modify court orders, help to locate parents, they'll establish parentage when that's not established, and they will collect and process payments, child support payments, when those come into the county. Our welfare fraud, we have two welfare fraud investigators, and those two individuals, if there is a concern on the part of the financial worker, when a person comes in and applies for public assistance, if there's a concern, for example, that maybe information on the application doesn't make sense, or there's gaps, or there's some concern that the information's not accurate, they can make a referral to our welfare fraud investigators, and they will investigate that concern. Primary goal is to prevent public benefits from going out if information's incorrect. If benefits are issued, and then later we find out that information presented to the county was incorrect, then we try to recoup that, recoup those payments. And in some cases, we will pursue with the county attorney's office a criminal process.
How many cases did they handle roughly last year?
Oh goodness, I don't have that number. Yeah, I apologize, I don't have it, but they do, they do a lot of work in that unit, and have done a really, really good job, and I don't know, well Jenny, you probably have the criminal numbers, not, because there's a good percentage that don't actually go to court, but.
Right, yeah, and I know we ran those numbers last year.
Yeah, we did.
So I can give those and provide those.
How much leeway do we have to go into the private matters of people? I mean, if you apply and say welfare fraud, or whatever the case may be, how much leeway do we have to go into their private information?
Well, there's a lot of information that's requested at the point of an application, and so anything on that application that doesn't quite look right, we have the ability to inquire about. Individuals always have the right to say, you know what, I'm not going to provide that, and that certainly is their choice that would ultimately probably impact their ability to receive the benefits. So there are times when maybe we're questioning information on an application, people will just withdraw their application, or they won't move forward with it, and that's their choice as well. But if they want to apply for benefits and want to be determined eligible, we have to make sure that we have the correct information. We don't always catch it up front, sometimes we catch it in the back end. And then our collections officers, they certainly enforce, they certainly locate, what they do is they collect any county debt. So any county debt that's owed, they work on collecting that, they will enforce orders for payment, they will work to locate people who have county debt. They will utilize various means in order to capture county debt, like revenue or capture tax, claims, those kinds of things, so. Okay. And then the last two pages, I really just wanted to highlight for you, based on all of those units, then where does all the money go? We have a $17 million budget in highlighting for you what program areas fall within that budget. So the first three on the left-hand side bar graphs are all of our administrative areas. So the income maintenance units, that's the IMU, that is the unit that has, that processes all the public assistance applications. There's about 27 staff in that unit. That budget expenditure there is for all those staff and administrative expenses and all those kinds of things. Then we have the Child Support Administration, and then the Social Service Administration includes all of those other human service areas, child protection, child welfare, disability, mental health, chemical health, adult services, all of those.
Is it, Rhonda, is it that 9.2 million roughly, is that, is that what's eligible for reimbursement?
Some of that is. So in the income maintenance unit, the staff there is eligible for 50% federal financial participation.
So 50% of that 3 million?
Well, not, not all of it, but certain expenditures within that, yes.
How about in the child support?
And the same for child support, they have about a 66% reimbursement, so some of the eligible expenditures under that receive that funding. And in the Social Services Administration, on the next page, you'll see revenues. The staff there earn revenue based on their activity and client eligibility. So then under budgeted expenditures, we have also county burials, and SEP is our rural Minnesota SEP. So we are responsible to provide for county burials for those that are indigent in our community that pass away. On average, we do about 40, between 40, 45 county burials a year, and that's been averaging about $80,000. The remainder of that amount there, that 872, is a contract with rural Minnesota SEP. And that is actually totally funded by a grant that we get from the Department of Human Services for work participation for people who apply for cash grants, M.F.I.P. and D.W.P.
So only $80,000 of that figure goes to burial on the 45?
Correct, yeah, yeah. We pay, the $152,000, we pay when individuals go into a nursing home who are under the age of 65, we pay a county share to that, and that is what that is. And then also, when individuals go into group homes, or what we call ICFMRs, intermediate care facilities for developmental disabilities, we also pay a county share, and that is what that $152,000 is, is our county share.
Who pays the rest?
The state, Medicaid.
What percentage would you say we are?
10%. Then we have, the $44,000 in Medicaid pass-through is not an impact to the budget, both on the expenditure or revenue side, because it's services that are authorized for Medicaid payment, we pay it out, and then we get fully reimbursed. So it's in our budget, it passes through our budget, but it's not a levy, it's not a levy impact to us. Then we have all the social services areas there in the middle and to the right. So children's area, 2.5 million, that primarily is out-of-home placements for kids. We are, I need to look more closely, but we're probably spending about 2.2 million in out-of-home placements this year. Most of it's paid for under the children's area, but some of it falls under the mental health as well. So if kids are in placements primarily due to mental health, those payments come out of the mental health side. But also, what's under there is we do have some contracts for like in-home services for when we're working with families where child maltreatment is an issue, and we contract for some therapeutic or family skills kinds of services to go in and support the family, supervised visitations, some of those services. Then we have childcare. Childcare, the biggest portion of that childcare is related to out-of-home placements. So when we have young kids that go into foster care, we have maybe two working foster parents, and we have a child, the children need to go to childcare, so that gets paid under the childcare service area. Chemical dependency, that is our detox, that is our county share for when we send individuals who are eligible for funding to chemical dependency treatment. We have about, close to a 23% county share. So that's primarily what those dollars are. Mental health is a lot of our county contracts as well as placements, and then a big chunk of it is our mental health hold orders that we spoke about when the legislators were here. A lot of that all comes under mental health, so we have some pretty significant expenditures there. Disability services, that is, most of the disability services are funded under Medicaid, so they don't come through our budget, but we do have some county funds that go into supporting these programs. One is semi-independent living skills for folks with disabilities who are living in their community. We get a grant, but we have a 30% share to that grant, so that's reflected here. Also, supported employment for individuals with disabilities who maybe need job coaches or support out in the employment field, we have some county dollars that go into that as well. So those are some of the things that come under that area. And then our adult services, a big chunk of that is our guardianship petition with Lutheran Social Services for public guardians, when we have individuals that are in need of a guardian, and there is no family or individual to do that, and they're low-income, and the county has a statutory responsibility to provide for that. So a good chunk of that amount is guardianship. So that's where all the money goes. And then the last page is how we pay for it all. And so you'll see the tax aid there, the amount of money we get in grants or allocations. The third one over there, income maintenance and child support, federal financial participation, that's what you were asking about, Ms. Campbell. The 1.6 million is the claims that the social workers earn in the work that they do. So it all depends on who they're serving, whether the individual is low-income or not, and what the service is as to whether they can claim. So we are frequently working with our auditors and our staff on making sure that we're claiming and capturing as much revenue as we can when we have that ability. And then we have just various incentives and collections and shares that we receive based on the work that we do. The $765,000 is what's called Social Service Time Study, that's kind of a complicated process where we can earn money, again, based on the work that we do every once in a while. If I'm a social worker sitting at my desk, I'll get an email that says it's time for what's called a random moment, and I record what I'm doing, based on choices. Depending on what I'm doing and the choices I make will depend on the revenue the county gets, so. And then we have some pass-through areas, this again is not an impact to the county levy at all. For example, the collaborative, the money that the Clay County Collaborative earns comes through the social service budget, and then we pay it out, so it's reflected there. And then we have some smaller direct billings where, you know, we might bill a client for a particular service or managed care organizations for some of the work that we do. So, all of that.
Any questions for Rhonda?
A lot going on.
The simple little budget, any more questions there?
It's hard to know how to put this together.
Good work.
Okay, Rhonda, how about to fill your social worker position?
Okay, yes. So if you, the handout I just gave you, actually, the first unit there, that is where the staff resignation is in. And this is a child protection assessment investigation position resignation that I received last week. And so we are requesting to have approval to fill that position. She will be done effective March 18th. And myself and the supervisor actually met with the Personnel Issues Committee this morning to talk a little bit about the issues and the workload in that unit. And I could not imagine not being able to fill this position. And in fact, we'll be coming and talking about additional positions next week, but, so.
You want a motion to approve the replacement, and a motion to approve backfilling? Are you talking two motions or just one that would include that?
I think you've done it in one motion before. Sometimes we have movement, internal movement, and.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, some discussion. I know we didn't address this issue at our Personnel Committee this morning, and they've got some serious issues in social services and child protection, and the numbers are increasing dramatically, and the state looks like it's going to be mandating more work for this particular unit. So we'll be coming forward, or Rhonda will be coming forward probably in the next week?
Yeah.
Next week for looking for some additional staff, which I know the Pick Committee supported, so. Kevin, you maybe have something to add?
No, I'll discuss that next week, but this one is critical to get this one for today.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye, motion carries. Thanks, Rhonda.
Thanks, Rhonda.
See you next week.
All right.
Let's take a five-minute break, and went over a little bit here, so. Contract approvals, Darren Brooks.
Yes, thank you for having me this morning. I just wanted to do a very quick review on what bargaining units we have and the status of the contracts that we have so far. As you know, we have nine bargaining units, and we had three of them that were ended last year, 2014, and the social workers and the case aides, the ones that you have for signature today. We also had the lieutenants and the detox who had wager openers for 2015, and both of those are completed as well for the 2%. This coming year, we will have the lieutenants, detox as the open contracts at the end of the year, so we'll have those two for next year. The only one right now that is outstanding is the Assistant County Attorneys, and we had scheduled a meeting with them this month, but we had some conflicts in the schedule, and so we're scheduled to meet with them on April 1st, and hopefully we'll get that resolved fairly quickly after that. So what I have for you today is the social workers and case aides contracts. They did do a three-year contract for 2015, 16, and 17. This year, we also did approve the contract for the deputies for 2015, 16, and 17, so this is not new ground that we're breaking with these two bargaining units. And the increase that we agreed to with the deputies and is also proposed with the social workers and case aides is the 2% for 15, 2% for 16, and 3 and 1/4% for 17. The one thing that they did increase in the social workers' contract is the on-call pay. It's been $3 since the contract, I believe since the contract was established, I believe it was six years ago or so. And they wanted to increase that to $4 an hour for the on-call pay. We did get a couple, some language in there that was recommended by our labor attorney, Mike Rangel, and some of that has to do with the, what a probationary employee can and can't grieve, and basically stating that a probationary employee cannot grieve a dismissal at this point. So that was, been put into the contracts, and the bargaining unit and the stewards were okay with that. They signed off on that. The other thing that they put in there is what is called a choice of remedy, so that if there is a grievance that would go further into mediation if there is a grievance that would go further into mediation and arbitration, that they will have one avenue of grievance. Right now, if they're a veteran, they could go through Veterans Court or civil service or union grievance, and, and they could do it in all of these, you know, either simultaneously or whatever. And so Mike Rangel thought it was important to put in there language that states that they, they have to pick the route that they're going to grieve on, whether it be through the union, through the Veterans Court, or through this civil matter. So that is what I have for the contracts, is if there's any questions. I certainly entertain that.
On-call pay, are we, whether they come to work in, I mean, I guess I wanted to explain on-call, I realize what on-call means.
Yep.
If that's, if they come in, they have to get an increase or just for being on-call, we're increasing it from three to four?
Just for being on-call, and that's, that's kind of why I had Rhonda stick around too, because this is for her social workers, and she does have an on-call pool that they, they have. They're expected to be on-call for an entire week, and then if any cases come in within that week, out of the bounds of the, you know, 8 to 4:30, then they would be called. Now, sometimes those calls can be handled over the phone, other times they have to go out to the field or come into the office or whatever the case may be.
And the pay is basically because they're restricted, they have to respond when those calls come in and so their time is, they can't leave.
So you're looking at about 128 hours of on-call pay per week for, you know, one employee, because the other 40 hours they're going to be working, and it works out to about 128 hours of on-call pay when that person is on-call for that week. So if they come in and, you know, have to work an extensive period of time, then, you know, they would be allowed to use flex time for that as well, so. Any other questions? You do have the contracts with you, Commissioner Wayland?
One of the board's wishes.
Oh, I'm sorry, there, there is two MOUs attached. They're fairly standard MOUs. One of them is a Me Too clause, which we have done before, which basically states that if any other bargaining unit bargains an increased COLA, that they would get that as well. The other Me Too is some language that Mike Rangel thought important, and we do too as well, is that if, with all of the Affordable Care Act changes that are coming down and the rules and the regulations, if there's something that impacts the budget that has to do with the Affordable Care Act, it allows either the union or the county to reopen negotiations to discuss that. So those would be the two MOUs that would be attached to both of those contracts.
It says both the bargaining units agree on, on what is proposed. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't down in the cities with the rest of you, but I did have a couple. Tuesday, March 3rd, Moorehead Planning Commission, general business, then raising the building behind Orton's and build a 64 apartment complex, and then to rezone that area from community commercial to commercial mixed use. And that is going on to, we read it out, and that will go on to the city council. And then we also agreed to final plat approval in what's called Comstock Sixth Edition, and that also will go on to the city council. Thursday, March 5th, the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health, general business, then we discussed the 25th anniversary of the Local Advisory Council, began preparation for the May 5th presentation to this board, and then discussed the upcoming possibilities for May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month. Agency reports from Clay County Public Health Solutions, Clay County Social Services, Lakeland Mental Health, Clay County Collaborative, and Clay County Juvenile Center. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ryan?
Well, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we're, I guess I was down at the AMC, and my part, on general government, I guess I went to that session, and we had a presentation by NACO, and that gal presented a lot of information that's available on NACO, you know. I don't know how often we go on that website or whatever, you know, they have just a lot of data for counties all over the United States, and very interesting presentation on that one. Then we had a presentation by the EMS, some EMS people. Probably happening all over the state as far as funding for the EMS program and also recruitment. I mean, a big problem with recruitment, you know, getting people to, to do the EMS jobs. Do we have someone on EMS board, is, is there, do we have an EMS board? We don't have any?
No, I don't believe we have an EMS board. We have public health, Mr. Chair. All right.
We have a committee, ambulance committee, but.
Yeah, a local one.
There's been one meeting, so.
Yeah.
Some of the items they brought up, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
No, that's fine, sorry.
Some of the items they brought up as far as what general government's going to be working on is, you know, it's the state pay all taxes, it's state-owned property. There's 25% of the property in Minnesota is state-owned, so they're looking at a lot of tax money not being, not, not being collected, I mean, but possibly, you know, selling tax, state-owned land, you know. We talked about the assess accreditation, appointment of county road officers, which we've already taken care of, but other counties are still concerned about that. They're also looking at voting measures, looking at moving the primary up from, I think June to March, I think they're looking at.
August to June.
August, August to June, yeah. Other than that, I went to a Heartland Trail meeting yesterday morning. We had a couple of Heartland Trail open houses or whatever you want to call them, you know, and the comments that were received in those, I brought copies along, I guess Grant, you had some, you can give one to, I don't know if Brian got a Heartland Trail, if you got that or not, but there's comments in there as to what people think about the Heartland Trail. And I brought those minutes along just for information, and they're looking more now at, just doing a segment of the Heartland Trail, not looking at going all the way across, because that's probably going to be a long, if you're going to do the whole thing, it's going to be a long process, you know, but if we just take one segment, like from the Buffalo River State Park to Holly, we can probably get that segment completed, you know, and that was pretty much the discussion. After that, I went to FM COG meeting where we discussed the budget for 2016. Also, they're looking redoing the Articles of Association, which, which haven't been updated for quite a while. The new executive director, Dale Christian, that's been doing a lot, a lot of work on that and getting that updated. Last night, I went to the City of Dilworth, city council meeting. It was interesting there, they had a guy from one of the banks, local banks, giving them an investment plan, you know, as far as they can invest their money, they've got this money in reserve, you know, and he was coming up with a plan, you know, if you take all your money and put it in, you know, right now, some of the cities probably have, because there's a $250,000 limit on their investments and stuff like that as far as being insured, you know, taking your stuff, and they had an investment plan for, that city deal was going to go with. You know, I thought it was an interesting presentation, and I don't know if we look at investing differently or not, or we just stay with the same thing. I mean, it's just, it was interesting. They're also looking at some, opening some bits and some water main projects, and they hired a couple of people. Other than that, that's it.
Mr. Chair, I mean, Frank brought up the fact that Minnesota, about 25% of the land is owned by the state. Correct?
Yeah.
Now, does that include lakes?
I really don't know what's included.
I would think it.
I don't think so.
You don't?
I don't think it does. And it varies a lot by county. There are some counties that have a huge percentage of their land owned by the state now, so.
But lakes then are not included within that 25%?
Well, they're having a problem with some situations where, like, organizations like Festus Forever may be buying some land, you know, and then they donate to fish and wildlife, you know, and then all of a sudden it's off the tax roll again, you know, and it's just, and they're having a problem with some of that stuff going on.
Okay, well, primarily in my meetings, we're dealing with the AMC conference in St. Paul this week. Started off with the Transportation Committee meeting, and that, of course, we listened to proposals that are currently out there by the House and Senate, and then the governor's version of the Transportation Bill. I understand he's going to be coming to the neck of the woods here in the next couple days or something to, to be talking more about his proposal for transportation. Then we received a, a, well, then we had a talk from Margaret Donahue from the Move Minnesota, co-chair with the Transportation Alliance Director, she's the Transportation Alliance Director. And then we received a federal update on what's going on with the federal funding for all these projects. And as typical in the federal legislature, everything is hung up. And then we did receive some legislative updates, and we went through platform positions, going from extending the length and weights of semis, that discussion came back, and should we or shouldn't we support those issues. And then, and then I also attended the meeting regarding recycling, and then Commissioner Wayland was there as well for a while, but there's just a lot of discussion, and a lot of it, it's stuff that, because we're so involved with what we're doing here now, we're, we're pretty aware of some of this stuff, but MPC, it's one of those areas where they want to support these types of things moving forward with, with improved recycling, keeping things out of our landfills. The only downside of it is, is they don't have any funds to support right now, so, but it's, it was, out of all of it, there was one county from Roseau County, I believe it was, who made the statements that recycling has just been too expensive for their county. I think he appeared to be in the minority, but, but anyway, that's, those were, those were, and then we did, Commissioner Wayland and I did go over to the Capitol, and Commissioner Wayland got to go there another time besides myself, but we did go over and we met with Bruce Messelt, and we did have conversations with some local legislatures regarding our, 15 million that's in the docket right now for our jail project. And we were able to get a few more legislatures to sign on to Cantican's bill, and, and one of them being Senator Inger Bretson from, from Alexandria.
He's from Douglas County.
Yeah, Douglas County.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and then there were some others, and Grant may be able to follow up on it, but that's all I had on those issues.
Benny?
Last week, I also attended the joint legislative session, and Frank covered some of the presentations really well, along with Kevin. I attended the environmental resources meetings where we had a presentation on the aquatic invasive species that are, we're all aware of, but I appreciate the continued education and status updates. We also talked about a piece of legislation that's being talked about at the Hill, the buffer strips on the ditches, they're proposing 50-foot buffer strips, and there were some farmers that were concerned, but I trust that it'll be debated at the Capitol. There was also some good presentations on some economic profiles that were done on the counties of Minnesota, the state, and also at the nation, and Clay County and parts of western Minnesota are really bucking the trend and have rebounded more quickly and efficiently than the metro for sure and other areas in Minnesota, so it's, it's nice to see that, that that's the case here. Last night, I attended the Barnesville City Council meeting, was invited by their administrator, and appreciated the opportunity to meet some of the council members that I haven't previously met. And then I also attended the Buffalo Red Watershed last night, where there were some conservative citizens on a, the Project 77, that's just a continued debate with that one, and just general business and permit, permits there. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so I was also in St. Paul last week. The MRCC meeting on Tuesday night, mostly discussing transportation, and there were actually about 12 senators and representatives there, and fortunately or unfortunately from both parties, so they seemed to be able to snipe at each other pretty well, even in something like that, blaming each other for all the problems, but there is consensus that transportation is a major issue statewide and that they are going to find some resolutions to it this year, so we'll wait and see on that. Attended the public safety meeting for AMC and the recycling session, as Kevin already mentioned, and I did go to the Capitol a couple of times and meet with various legislators on the jail issue, and I, I think it was pretty positive, you know, pretty encouraging actually from, from a lot of them, so a lot more work to be done there, but, and I think Brian is going down this week again to, to meet with, with some legislators, so hopefully we'll have a chance at that. I had a couple Heartland Trail meetings, one on Friday and one yesterday, and Frank already mentioned that, but we did agree that the section we're going to try and concentrate on to get funding for is from Buffalo State Park to Holly, and so we, after he left, Frank, we did create a committee for, for funding and bonding and getting that section started, and I volunteered you for that committee, so I, I should be grateful for that, so.
Well, thank you very much.
So kind of you, generous.
I'll just thank you for that, instead of sending you a card.
Okay, and that, well, we had the PICK meeting, which I already mentioned earlier when Rhonda was speaking, and so, so that was it for me. So, Brian?
You know, the one thing I was gonna, I forgot to talk about the MRCC meeting too, you mentioned about the legislators, you know, and I noticed that a couple of the sessions I went to, you know, they had a Republican or a Democrat there, and they were, they were more likely they were picking on each other, you know, instead of presenting what each party is doing for us. They were more like they were.
You surprised by that?
They were, well, you know, I guess I expected them to be presenting something to us that's, that's valuable to us to, to work with, you know, and what are you, what are they doing for us? But it seemed like they were just airing out their differences in some situations.
Mr. Chair, I moved over to this spot today because I think we're going to have a little more lengthy of a discussion, so rather than back and forth here, the first item I'd like to, well, maybe I should mention, when you talk about the state and federal land, in lieu of taxes, there is called, something that's called a PILT payment, and that's payment in lieu of taxes, and of course, the counties feel that that certainly isn't adequate to cover, and, because they, they add more land, but they don't add more money, so it's the same money that gets divided by a greater pot, and it gets a little thinner every time a tax gets added, so, but that is one of the issues that, that, the first item I have, this has kind of happened fairly rapidly at the end of last week, and what I first want to hand out to you is a letter that the NEAR of Moorehead has sent to Chairman Jerry Van Amber of the Buffalo Red Watershed, and the, this kind of evolved, asking them to support the diversion budget. There's lots of different things in the diversion budget. One is financing the EIS, the study in Minnesota. And so we were contacted late last week and wondered if the county board would want to do the same in contacting the watershed. same in contacting the watershed, and how far you want to go in contacting it, you appoint three members of that watershed board, and we talked about, should this board then send a letter to our appointees expressing what this board has done in passing the budget, and what your wishes are in moving forward. So, in working with the diversion authority, just to get things started here, certainly not what you maybe already want to send, but here is kind of a draft letter, so we can kind of move the discussion on down the road, of maybe something that you would want to endorse by this board, or, or whatever, but to have some discussion on, and I realize you can't read that two and a half-page letter from the mayor already, but what they're doing there is, what she is doing is, she's pointing out items within the budget, and the reasons why she feels that the Buffalo Red should support the budget because of the EIS, because of the hardship committees, because of the flood protection that Fargo is working with, and many of the other things, so, I guess what you have before you is a draft letter from this county board to the three members of the Buffalo Red Watershed, asking for them to support the upcoming vote in regards to the budget as well.
So, discussion now, yeah, well, I, I guess I, you know, I think this is definitely something we have to do, I think the mayor brought some good points out in her letter, and I, I think we also need to send something to Ottertail County, and, you know, about our position on this, and, you know, since we agreed, you know, you know, we have somebody from Ottertail County that is on the Buffalo Red Board now, and I think Wilkin County, too, I think we should express our position, or, you know, at least, we'll see what the board's position is, but I, you know, I think it's something that has to be done, and some, you know, some issues have to be addressed, and I think there were some statements made at an Ottertail County meeting that are, you know, I find alarming, and I think need to be addressed, and I think we should bring to the Ottertail County Board's attention, and let them know our concerns about that, so, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to start off by, I had had an opportunity to see Mayor Williams' letter prior to today, and I thought it was a very well-written letter with multiple reasons why the watershed should be supporting and voting in favor of the budget for 2016, or 15, it's 15 and 16, it's, I'd actually go to September maybe. But anyway, the, you know, it's, it's kind of odd that, that in their last vote, it was three to three, and there were some concerns with the budget, but yet, one of the primary responsibilities in this budget is funding the Minnesota EIS, of which is what the Buffalo Red, the Moritz City Council, the state of Minnesota, and everybody's been asking us to do is to get through that Minnesota EIS, so that it can, so they can weigh in on, on any impacts to the state of Minnesota. So by not supporting this budget, you're not supporting the dollars that go to finish the EIS study, and it seems you just can't have it both ways, you can't be saying, well, we need to have this study done, but yet, we're not going to pay to do the study, I just find that remarkable. In terms of this letter, oh, I wanted to point out one other thing that I just learned yesterday afternoon, I had received an email that the diversion authority has received a application for a flood project in the Buffalo Red River Watershed District, to the tune of 1.5, 1.7 million dollars, of which they're saying that they qualify for now, and are asking for the 5% upfront, the way, we have set up a system through the diversion authority, we have 25 to 30 million dollars that the diversion authority has said will offer up to area watersheds to help with finding storage, proper storage that will help the valley. So the watershed now has sent in or submitted an application for this project, and they're asking for the 5% down payment on it, which I think comes to about $185,000, so they're asking for the diversion authority to distribute those monies to them, but yet, they refuse to pass the budget where the money's in.
I think it's because they were going to, they wanted to ask the critical questions first before they approved it, I mean, that's, that's part of what's going on, the reason that initially it didn't pass the first time is because they just had some, some questions on where that budget would, would go, I mean...
Okay, and I think we're trying to tell them where it's going.
Right, no, I appreciate the mayor's letter, I think she definitely covers some, some good points, but this is a partnership, there's many entities in this, and the fact that there's only three individuals that is on this letter going to, I mean, when we're addressing the entire entity, shouldn't it address the entire?
Well, yeah, and I, and I think we can do that, but, but we've got to, we've got to see what's also been done here, I've also learned that Wilkin County board members have told their Wilkin County members on the watershed, that if they support in any way, anything that goes with this diversion project, that they will not be reappointed to the board.
And that's inappropriate, and so I feel like us pressuring them into voting one way or the other isn't appropriate in itself.
I think we're explaining to them our position as to why we think that they should vote in favor of this, our county board has voted in support of this project and the budget, we voted for the budget.
And you had, we had our chance, I wasn't on the board at that time, but we had our chance to ask the critical questions and see if we were going to pass it or not, and, and I think that's, they're just playing that out, it's, it's not our position to coerce either way, they are asking the diversion authority members, and I was at that watershed meeting where many of us gave our opinions and told them how different things go, and I think it's, it's up to them now to decide whether or not that's appropriate, and, and we, I didn't, but we appointed competent people to that board, and it's not our position to micromanage that, I, if, if the mayor wants to send it, that's fine, I feel like they've, they've asked their own questions, and on the 23rd, they will vote, and, and they have the information in their hand to make a qualified decision.
And I, and I think we have the ability as our board to let the people that we appoint know where we stand on the project as well.
And didn't we do that by passing the budget?
Yes, we did, and we're also, we're also outlining them as to why, just like the mayor did, and asking them to do it.
But we also, I was there on the 23rd when you, when we all said why, Grant stood up and said why the Clay County Board passed it, you stood up and said why it was...
I didn't talk.
You, but members of the diversion authority stood up, I was there, I heard it all, and it was very well, well-played out, and I, this seems redundant to me, this seems, if you had a problem with Wilkin County approaching people and trying to coerce their, their thoughts, these people are competent, and they're more than willing to serve, and more than capable to decide.
Well, I, I agree with Grant, I think we should let them know our county board's position on this, and that we would like them to...
Well, you know, and there's been comments made, you know, that apparently happened in Ottertail County, you know, about, you know, their position on Fargo, well, you know, I mean, one of the problems here is, it seems to me that North Dakota is the issue, and, and our concerns are for Minnesota and what's happening in Clay County.
Right.
And, you know, we had this concern about this Buffalo Red Board, you know, last year, and, you know, about a county that has a voice on the Buffalo Red Board that pays almost literally nothing, you know, to fund these projects, yet they get an equal, you know, they have an equal vote on, you know, Kevin was very concerned about it, but I know, but that's what's going on, Kevin's concern last year is exactly what's going on, you know, now, in, you know, that's affecting Clay County, and so, you know, I, I think we need to, you know, at least address, you know, at that Buffalo Red Board, I didn't hear any explanation from any board member about why they won't pass the budget, since there's no money being requested from them, from any entity in Minnesota, why would they not pass, you know, they didn't offer up a good explanation, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's obstructionist, and that's the reason they're doing it, and, you know, I think we need to, you know, I think it's, we need to address it, at least that's, you know, my perspective on it, so...
I think in January, there was a member missing, and it tied, and they just basically said, we wanted to have the diversion authority come forward and explain more than just a single sheet, which they did, and that's great, but that's when there was a conflict of interest, and I think there would have been a vote at that meeting that we were, three of us were at anyways, and, and I've heard that on the 23rd, everyone will be in attendance, so they will have their fair chance, if you want to discuss why the Buffalo Red is even on the board, that's something, that's something separate, and if there's concern, you're more than welcome to bring that up, but I don't feel that sending a letter to three of the members is appropriate, I mean, if this is going to be base and wide, and you want to tell them where you stand, then at least send it to the entire board.
Mr. Chair, we do have a draft for the other members of the board as well, which is very, very similar, so I think Commissioner Mondo does have a point, it should be probably all the managers of it, and it probably should be the same, same letter, and, and she's right, the, this board has taken the action on the budget, what you're doing is, you are showing support for the diversion project and the budget that is being proposed, and as a government entity, rather than the chair sending the letter, you wanted to be united in, in, in your presentation on it.
The Moritz City Council also passed the budget, and, and the mayor still sent this letter, we're doing the same thing that the mayor's doing, we're asking that we do the same thing that the mayor did.
Well, I personally don't have any problem sending a letter to every...
And if it goes to all of them, that's fine.
Yeah, you know, the same letter to all the members of the Buffalo Red Board is, is fine with me, so.
But, you know, at least we haven't, at least we haven't, you know, gone to the level where we've, we've told any of our managers that if you don't vote, that, or that if you vote against this budget, or against anything to do with the diversion, you're not going to be reappointed, we haven't done that.
So you think bringing it up at our meeting is going to make that, those waters calm? I mean, it just, it seems that's almost catty in itself.
Well, but they're the ones doing it.
Okay, well, but we can rise above that and not do it that way.
And we are, and we are, but, but, but when we say, why are we only sending, sending it to ours, I mean, they're, they're making even bigger statements to their own.
Mr. Chair, what if they, that group does not, votes against the budget, what does that mean? What are the effects of that?
I think it has a lot of implications, so, based on the way it's set up, you know, based, based on the agreement we have with our North Dakota partners.
Well, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Ingersoll, I may respond a little bit on that, I don't know what the exact steps are, certainly, there's been lots of discussion and thought as to how you move forward, that certainly isn't going to freeze everything, there will be steps taken to, to work within the system, I mean, these are North Dakota dollars, and in, in the mayor's letter, she points out all of the things that are affected, I mean, there's agricultural impacts that this, this budget funds through NDSU to how to, to, I'll say indemnify, but if there's a flood, to remediate some of the damages, they're looking at how they handle the organic farmer, because that's such a long process, so it takes money upfront in order maybe to buy land, trade out, there's hardship cases, we've brought, now, there's been three properties approved in Minnesota that this budget has paid for, and these people have medical hardships that it's brought out from, so, these things will need to go forward, they just may have to go forward in a different manner.
Well, that's why it doesn't make any sense not approving the budget, because that's what the money is being spent on, is to address these issues of concern, so...
Right, and I think people understand that the NDSU study, for example, and the hardship studies, for example, need to go through, and I think, I wouldn't be surprised, for instance, if they were to only approve part of the budget, because I think part of the problem that people have the conflict with is approving a budget that may possibly negatively affect Minnesota, so if we're going to approve the budget, and if they're worried about Oxbow money being in that budget that will negatively affect Minnesota, they want to wait until that EIS is complete, which I think is appropriate to just ask those questions, so I'm not, I'm not saying that they should, you know, not pass the budget in any form, but I think it's important for us to allow due process to go through, we appointed competent people that can make a decision.
Let me reply to that, we, when it came to impacts to Minnesota, when the plan for the Oxbow Hickson Baki project was put before the diversion authority, I specifically asked the question if there would be any impacts to the state of Minnesota with that project going forward, and at that point in time, it was going forward to be constructed at the 500-year level. The reply from the technical people, not, not the politicians, but the technical people, is that they had done their studies, and there'd be no impacts to Minnesota, that is why I voted in favor of it, and that is why Councilmember Nancy Otto voted in favor of it.
You don't need to campaign, that we all, all had our opportunity to pass it, this, I'm not arguing with you on the validity of that, the watershed is the one asking the important questions.
Okay, okay, so then let's go to the watershed, so the watershed asked their own independent engineer, asked their own engineer to do a study of the Oxbow Hickson Baki project, and would it have any impacts to the state of Minnesota, and his reply to his watershed board was no, there would be no impacts to Minnesota. So, so the issue regarding the impacts to Minnesota on what is being done today, I believe has been clearly vetted, and it's been done by the appropriate people to do it, not the politicians, but the people who, who work with the scientific data, from the Corps of Engineers to all the other engineering firms, the modeling that's done, that FEMA uses for modeling, all of those things are, are what have been used to do it.
Mr. Chair, I haven't read this, and I haven't read this, and I'm not on the diversion board, but from what I gather, this letter is being sent to our representatives on the board, seems to me they would vote for the budget anyway, is that true, or are some of them not in favor of voting on the budget?
Well, there's one, there's one who voted no the first time.
But then had a conflict of interest.
Okay, that...
It was proposed, had a possible conflict of interest.
Which I think has been resolved.
Okay, is it necessary to say what the conflict of interest was, or is, or not?
There's a family member that may possibly receive a payment down the road, not the person in the, individual.
From what I'm hearing, then, two of these people would vote for it regardless, even if this other person would vote against it, it would still pass, it would not...
Maybe, one person was missing.
Okay, so we could...
The person missing was from Wilkin County.
All right, so it could be, okay, and if they vote against the budget, and I already asked that question, it's not going to stop the project, I'm sure, it could slow it down, it could slow it.
Other actions have to be taken, put it down.
Right.
Have to be taken, is it necessary to send this letter to, to the people on here?
I think it is.
Well, did you say you have a letter for the other two, because there's, you know, I think there's some things that probably should be addressed for all the, the Red River, or the board to see, so...
What we have, Mr. Chair, is I passed out the letter that was for your discussion, not, that discussion, that determination has been made. Whether it goes to, whether the letter goes out at all, whether who it goes to, these three appointees of yours or. And then there was another letter that was very, very similar that would go to the other four members. There's a seven-member board on this watershed.
So, it would go to all seven?
It would go to all seven. And I think what Commissioner Mojo is, she's not necessarily suggesting that the letter go out, but she said, "I think what I interpreted, if, if a letter went out, why are we just targeting our three appointees? Why not go to the entire seven-member board?"
If we're approaching this as a base and wide project, we should, should at least, you know.
Right. So, so, and that's basic, I have that in front of me, but it's basically the same letter. So, I think.
If I may, Mr. Chair, what is the, how urgent is it that this be taken care of today? Is it today?
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
But the letter to the other entities or members, does that address the comments that were made by the article?
No, that's, that's another letter and I think that's another topic. Okay, then you're communicating to commissioners, to other county commissioners. I think the watershed is separate from the other commissioners.
Okay, well, let's decide on this and then move on to that, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem in the world adding the other members to this letter. I don't have a problem with it.
I think it's professionally done.
I'd like to hear what, if I may, Commissioner Mojo asked to say regarding that.
I do not support sending this letter. I feel if the mayor and, and the council members want to, that's fine. I, I have observed lots of information being given to the Buffalo Red and I feel like they're competent and they are informed and can make a decision on the 23rd without us sending a, a letter to pressure or.
Okay, thank you.
Coerse them.
Well, and, and I would just say that, you know, I think it's appropriate to send them a letter. They haven't made a, this final decision on that budget, you know, and, and so I, I don't see that as putting any pressure on them. It, it shows them what our, you know, or what, you know, if that's what we decide as a group to do, that that's what our position is, so. You know, I, you know, we're the ones that appointed those people and so I, I think it's fair that they know what, what our position as a board is, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, as I may say, and I'm, I'm not taking either sides on this, but the point being is communication to your appointed or elected officials, showing them what your opinion is or what your board, that's part of our democratic process. I mean, that's why we go down and lobby, that's why we contact our legislators to let them know what our opinions are on this. So, you know, I know what, what Commissioner Mojo is saying, but on the other hand, this is, I think politely written and points out some of the obvious things and, and if you contact them all, and I think that's a very good idea to send it to all of the seven commissioners, I, I don't know that they would be terribly offended that you're trying to tell them what to do. You're just, you're asking for their support and we do that politically all the time.
And that's maybe where I, I have a, a conflict because I feel as, that our case as a board was well displayed when we approved the budget and then when, when Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland attended that, that meeting in Barnesville, I feel like they very eloquently stated the opinions and wishes that, that are and, and it seems redundant to me.
Well, sometimes when you want to get what you want, sometimes being redundant is okay.
Why don't we, somebody make a motion to act on it?
One of the board's wishes on that.
I, I would move that, now, this letter, if we add the remaining members, is there anything in this letter that would have to be revised to match all, all members?
Maybe that.
Okay, so I, I would move, moving forward with, with this letter to all members, voting members of the Buffalo Red Watershed Board. And with any, any changes within this needed to recognize that it's, it's written to all of them, not just the Clay County reps. That's my motion.
I would second that, just to get into discussion though.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion. Frank?
My question is, can we vote on this since it's not on the agenda?
We're not spending any money.
As long as they're not spending money, you can.
Okay. Second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Wayne?
Would you call the roll for your.
Sure. Vicki, you want to call the roll?
Ingorsol?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Mojo?
No.
Wayne?
Yes. Okay, Brian, you've got another.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Then, we have a little bit of a draft, but maybe we should have a discussion whether you even want to go there and, and Commissioner Wayland, you bring that up. What, what, what are your wishes?
She wants.
Do you have an additional letter, you said?
Well, this is, this was a, a draft of a, a letter written for the county commissioner. And you might just pass it out there. It's, it's two pages there, just a little bit on the second page. But, Mr. Chair, you addressed that issue of some comments that had been made and I think Commissioner Mojo said she was at the one where the comment was made and she could probably verify it, but is this something then this, this county board wants to take up in reference to either one or two of other county boards within the region that, that do share appointments on the Buffalo, Buffalo Red Watershed? And I think that's our commonality here is that all three of those counties make the appointed, well, there's a, there's a fourth one. Becker makes an appointment as well to it. So, do you want to communicate with those other counties in regards to the influence that they have tried to instill on their appointees to this? I know we had a discussion. Should we, should we be trying to influence those as well? That can be looked at a couple different ways. The comment that I think you were alluding to was, was pretty negative in, in.
Yeah, I mean, that's the issue I have. I mean, it's, I don't think we should be influencing other counties, you know, but, but when comments like this are made, you know, and, and as far as I'm concerned, it impacts, you know, more than Clay County, I, you know, I think it should be addressed and, you know, whoever made the comment should at least answer for it, you know. I'm not sure you should.
What was the comment?
It's in the letter.
This one? Thank you, I'll read it.
Yeah, miss, maybe, Mr. Chair, we can give them a, a minute to, to, to read through it.
Could we take five again?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break and.
But, but just before we do that, I, I would, I'd like to make another comment on, on some things that, you know, we've, we've been, I've, at least I've been kicking around and I know I've been talking with Brian about it and some other members and I, and I know Jenny, one of the, one of the issues you raised was, you know, could they, would they support a modified version of a budget? And, you know, that, that part, I, I still think, I still think they should vote the entire thing as it is in. I don't think that, that does any damage to, and I don't think, by the way, that that even tells them that they support the project. It says that they support the current.
I agree with that.
Level that it's at. And, and there's a lot of good for.
There hasn't been any request for them to.
No.
To vote on supporting.
And they, and down the road, they're going to have an opportunity to, to do it through a permit process.
Right.
And that's when they're going to have their ability to use.
Their authority.
Are they satisfied that this is appropriate to permit in our watershed district? Having said that, going back to this, you know, going back to this modified budget, you know, what is it that they have heartburn in the budget? Is it the fact that that Oxbow Hickson Baki project is in the budget? What if we pulled the Oxbow Hickson Baki out of the budget? Is that some, you know, I, I just assume not have to even go there. I think they should approve the entire budget. But if they, if they, if they're, still have heartburn over that, even though we know for a fact, based on technical data, and, and even the state of Minnesota, as far as I know, has not been able to refute the fact that there would be zero impact to Minnesota from that project. So, if, if that's, if that's the case, we could, you know, maybe down the road, talk about that, but I would, I, I certainly encourage the full support.
Oh, yeah, let's just take five minutes. We'll start, start at 11 o'clock again and, okay. We're back in session. We took a few-minute break to review a letter. Okay, discussion on, on this letter.
So, is the intention of this letter to address the inappropriate comments made or encourage them to pass the budget?
Well, I think it's to point out why it's important, that we feel it's important, you know, that the budget be passed and, and I.
I think it's both.
At least from my perspective, to address the inappropriate comments, so, I, yeah.
If you, if you are sending a letter, which I voted against, but you all passed, to encourage them to pass the budget, and I see, I feel like adding that in the bottom is not needed. If we want to address the inappropriate comments, which I support 100%, I feel that we need to take the high road and respect each other and, and making comments as commissioners or other elected officials to appointees is inappropriate.
Mr. Chair, these are two different letters. That, the letter that was just.
Right. I'm just, I'm just referencing in the last sentence where it says, "Please help us pass this budget."
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I understand where, though we need your support, we do, we need to, as Otter Tail residents or Wilken residents, Becker, Clay County, all support each other, but if the purpose is to address the inappropriate comments, then why do we need to say, "Please help us pass this budget?"
Good point.
You know, and I, and I think even within, within the letter, we're making it clear we want them to support, so, you know, so that you could take those words out and it's still going to, it's still.
Let's take them out.
In a way, though, but we're, we're saying we are a team in this. I mean, that's, that's what I'm getting from the general overview of this letter is we are a team and it's important to work as a team and not get catty. So, is it important to have that last piece in the letter? Read into you, into it how you want. You can perceive it however you want, but when you come out and say, "Please help us pass this budget," you just, you just approved a letter that says.
Very last, very last sentence.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Mojo that that should be removed from it if we are going to send the letter.
Well, that's, yeah, I don't have any problem with that. I, I mean, I think they're, they're going to understand that, you know, regardless of that statement, what, what we're asking for, so.
Well, that's still the intent of the letter, isn't it? For them to pass the budget?
Sure, of course.
I mean, we, we still want that, so I don't know whether that's in there or not.
It's to respectfully go about working it out.
Well, I don't know, we're still asking them to pass the budget. That's all that sentence does.
These, these are the, these are the types of comments that can be made publicly that, that just separate rather than trying to keep things, at least being able to talk reasonably at the table, but, I, this, this is something that.
Well, it's the comments that have been made all along, that this is all about Fargo and North Dakota. And at least from my perspective, it's never been about that. It's been about what's, you know, at least what I think is right for Morehead and Clay County residents and so, you know, to infer that from another neighboring county that we partner with on a lot of things is, I find alarming, so.
Mr. Chair, and will we send the letter with that last sentence left out?
I would second that.
Hey, Mr. Chair, would you call the roll, please, after discussion?
Sure, we have a motion and a second, further discussion on that letter to Otter Tail County.
I agree with you. It's, I feel we need to set a precedent as we move forward and be as respectful as possible in the process. While we may disagree on, on parts of the budget, it's inappropriate for elected officials to use that for a budget.
Vicki, you want to call the roll?
Chair, Ingorsol?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Mojo?
Yes.
Wayland? Yes. Wayland? Yes. Motion passes.
So, I can't even make an argument to not send this one.
Do you want to?
Not now.
Anything else, Brian, today?
Well, I have a couple other report items, if I can skim through them real quick.
Yeah.
Thank you for the good discussion on that. I, I think that's really important. Lowy informed me that we did receive a check for $130,000 in reference to the wind energy tax for 2014.
It's a little less than we thought, huh?
No, they started in March.
Oh.
So, no, it's about that.
It's not a full year.
Yeah, it's not a full year. So, it's, it's, it's right where they projected.
What are you projecting for a year with that?
150.
150.
The check that came in was about 160, but then it's divided between the school district and township.
And that's based on our current wind energy.
Right.
I mean, that can change, that may grow.
It could.
Have we heard any more? Are they going to put up any more windmills?
No, Mr. Chair, I haven't, other than a comment from a township officer down there that he had heard differently, that they were going to moulsplice some in between.
Down where?
In the southeast corner, what is it, Tansin Township, I guess, down there, that we have 30 towers, there's 32, 2 in Becker County and 30 in.
He was talking about putting some in between.
That's correct. Mm-hmm, yeah. Which would make sense, he could use the infrastructure and all that, so.
I was just wondering what we had heard, anything?
Well, haven't heard any more.
Tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, there's a dedication of the walking tunnel over at the Family Service Center. They cleaned out the basement hallways and things and, and I was looking for a representative to accompany me there.
What time?
From this board, 11 o'clock.
11?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
You want to go for a walk, Jenny?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm supposed to be in Viver Falls.
You want to come walk with me?
Yeah, we can walk in unison.
I just don't want to hold hands.
No, no.
Okay.
I got another meeting.
Okay.
If I can, I'll make it.
Okay.
I've got a meeting in the afternoon, but.
Very good. And, oh, just, I'll just hand this out now, you don't have to do anything on this, but right now, this has been something Joe has been working on with Extension for, out in front of the courthouse. If you see the, the grass out there and, you know, Extension would like to put, and I shouldn't say they would like to put, but Joe communicated with Randy Nelson from Extension and they're looking at some trees, experimental trees, it wouldn't be any cost to the county in doing so. Big question is, would you want to put in trees that will grow large into that front green space area?
Is this a project for a part of the Extension or just a member of the Extension wants to do it? It's not a youth project?
No, typically, Commissioner Mojo, these are the, what's the name of them, the?
Horticultures?
Yeah, it's the.
Master Gardeners.
Master Gardeners. Thank you, Vicki, I knew that Vicki would.
Oh, okay.
So, Master Gardeners, they're, they also do all of the planting of all of the flowers and everything that's around there. So, I'm, I'm assuming it's probably also part of the whole master gardener deal, but.
Yeah, I, I, it could be, but Randy Nelson is the one that's, he's looking at a certain type of tree and they will buy the tree because they want to watch them and see how they develop. It's almost like an experimental issue too. But then they would take out those rocks and bushes out that are in front of the parking spaces and, and then they would take care of the trees, they would make sure they're maintained and cared for and tested and all that kind of stuff. So, I don't know if you want to go that way, just think about it and give us your input. It's no cost to the county in regards to it, the Extension wants to do this, so.
Is there any, the cost ramifications otherwise?
I asked, Mr. Chair, I asked Joe that. I said, "Have you talked to the people that know the yard?" And they felt that they're spaced properly where that would work out fairly well.
Does it create any additional?
Snow.
Snow drifting issues or?
No, they're, they're taking out that bushes in the corner down here that do create a, a mess, so.
My only concern is if they're experimental trees, we want something that looks professional and, and cohesive and we don't want random species that may be dying every couple years.
Well, relay that.
Or the good cause, the ones we have problems because we've got some pretty significant trees out there, so.
Bring in some native bug that.
Yeah. And Frank had some.
He, he asked the same question, I was.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Yeah, I tend to, I guess I was the only one there, because you guys were down in St. Paul. But Thursday morning, I attended June Powers' meeting, and there were basically two topics. Steve Moore from the city of Morehead gave a presentation in regards to solid waste, and he updated, giving a lot of credit to the county for the expanded project that is being studied, not going forward with, that is being studied for different implementations. And then Dave Overbow was there from the county, and he updated the group in regards to County 18 and the 52, which he brought to your attention today and where it was at. We had a diversion advisory meeting. A lot talked about progress and looking at different aspects and discussing different options, as I commented to Commissioner Ingersoll about. So we had management team last Thursday morning as well. Just discussed a lot of internal issues and concerns. We had PIC meeting this morning. That's already alluded to. It was one topic, and that was in regards to the child protection and the needs that will be coming forth next, next Tuesday. This Saturday morning, you two commissioners have that...
Actually, I'm going to be out of town, but Frank has volunteered to take that there, so.
That's with her ag group again?
Yes, mm-hmm, yes.
Are you hoping that will be a monthly update until the session's over?
We'll have to see how they want to deal with it.
Yeah, yeah.
It was the legislature's idea to come back.
Yeah.
Right. This is their, their meeting, basically.
It's probably unlikely. As the session goes on, they'll be available. They'll probably be down there even on weekends, so.
And then I do plan to go to St. Paul tomorrow in regards to that. I had intended to go over to Perm today, but I just can't. I need to make some updates. You guys, like I said earlier, it looks like you guys had a real good meeting on Monday in regards to the crushing facility. I know you've asked for some changes and improvements on some things there, and the last thing, oh, I did have one more thing. No, I can't find it on here, so must not be that important. Oh, I do, one more. Matt has been talking to me about dispatch costs. We had a meeting last year with Commissioner Everett, yourself, and we decided that we were going to go forward and charge them the fees that they are experiencing, and that will be quite an increase. And Matt is working out letters as that. Those letters will be wrapped to the board. We feel that that letter should come from the board, so we'll be discussing that at a board meeting in the future, in the near future. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Jenny, anything?
No, thank you.
Vicki? Anybody else?